Moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Thank you. Item one is citizen concerns. This is concerns that are not already on the agenda. Anybody to speak?
Good afternoon. Gary Brown, Woodbury County, Sioux City, Iowa. Just wanted to stop by today and speak just a little bit about Woodbury County Emergency Services. Their staff is engaged in response to human life and property of the citizens of Woodbury County. Woodbury County Emergency Services staff need and deserve a qualified individual to lead the department. There's also a chance, a small chance, or there's a chance the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors could do a small reorganization plan within the department that I think I may have spoke to some of you about in the past, which I think would be a really beneficial move and would enhance the services that are provided to the citizens of Sioux City. The job description of the director should be updated. It still has duties in it when I was both the emergency manager and the emergency services director. These two jobs have some similarities, but the qualifications required to direct each of them is very different. You'll see that I gave you some handouts. The September 15 job description was when I was overseeing both the emergency manager and the emergency services director. In July, that job description was changed for the hiring process of '21. Taken a little bit of liberty and did some work on the job description that I think it brings it into the year 2022 with the departments that are completely severed and that would be helpful in finding the right candidate for the department to move forward. I'm also suggesting that because of the complexity of that position, that you might want to consider an interviewing committee. There are two representatives from the Board of Supervisors, two from World Fire, two from World EMS. The service does have its own medical director, which we operate under his medical license, and a human resources director. I will assist in any way I can during this transition, including helping with the search and hiring process, and I would be willing to return to the duty of my former position to oversee the department until a new director is hired. I'm not interested in serving in that position past July 30th of '22. I'm willing to do this at no cost to the taxpayers of Woodbury County. I will not require benefits associated with this position, including a vehicle, health insurance, cellphone, or mileage. So, and I'll take any questions you want. Y'all have my phone number, so reach out. But there is a really good opportunity available for a small reorganization. I think you and I spoke about it. Thank you.
You bet. Thanks, Gary.
I'm going to address the materials.
Second, motion by Ung, second by Radig. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Come on up, sir.
Daniel Cotter, C-O-T-T-E-R. I'm here, I don't even know if this is the right body to address, but I'm here to ask that the electronics and the computerized aids that we use in our election system be removed and that we return to a paper-only ballot, paper-only hand-counted ballot.
Probably the right forum to bring it up, but our auditor who is in charge of elections is not here today. I'm sure he has a deputy here. I don't know if he wanted to respond or leave that for Pat.
Can you pass this on to Auditor Hill and let him know your concerns?
All right. Thank you. I'm sorry I can't stay. I have to get ready for work. I'm glad you had the citizen's concerns.
At the beginning.
At the beginning.
You bet. Thanks, Dana. Anybody else from the public here to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? Sorry, I thought I silenced my phone. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item two, which is approval of the agenda. I got an email from our eternity attorney, and it made me think that maybe on, oh, what was it, item 12, we look at changing that to an informational item today and then look to revisit. That's a suggestion I would make, then approve the agenda.
Are you moving that?
Yeah, I'll move that.
To make it informational?
Yeah.
Okay. One second.
Motion by Radig, second by Ung. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, passes four to zero. I said five to zero on the first one, didn't I? It's probably a forced habit. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items three through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes, the April 12, 2022 meeting. Item four is approval of claims. Item five, from Community Economic Development Zoning Coordinator, Daniel Priestley. A is approval to set the dates and times for three public hearings for the proposed zoning ordinance map amendment for parcel ending in 0009, for May 3 at 4:40 p.m., May 10 at 4:40 p.m., and May 17 at 4:40 p.m. And B is approval to set the dates and times for three public hearings for the proposed zoning ordinance map amendment for parcel ending in 0002, for May 3 at 4:42 p.m., May 10 for 4:42 p.m., and May 17 for 4:42 p.m. Item six, from county auditor. Received county recorders' report of fees collected. Item seven, from county treasurer. A, approval to list tax suspension for RP. B is approve property tax refund request for Bank West in the amount of $102. C, approve property tax refund request for parcels 700 ending in 7007 in the amount of $1948.56 and parcel ending in 8,009 in the amount of $28.02.64. D is approve property tax refund request for, let's see, we got parcel ending in 3043 in the amount of $326. Parcel ending in 2006 in the amount of $1,839. Parcel ending in 4,003 in the amount of $25.26. Parcel ending in 1,003 in the amount of $22.20. Parcel ending in 1,008 in the amount of $18.04. No change. Parcel ending in 5,019 in the amount of $751, no change. Parcel ending 7,200 in the amount of $24.34, no change. And parcel ending in 7,700 in the amount of $11.33, no change. And item E is approve property tax refund request for parcel ending in 8,100 in an amount of $1,318. Item eight, from Board Administration, approve medical examiner contract. Item nine, from Human Resources. A is approval memorandum on personnel transactions, and B is authorization to initiate hiring process.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Now, second, motion by Taylor, second by Radig. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Item 10, from Human Resources, is A, approval to clarify the motion. For the one-time retention incentive approved by the Board on 2/15 of '22, includes 1,000 per full-time employee and also applies to part-time employees on a prorata basis.
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director. The first agenda item is a discussion and action regarding the clarification of that motion and the retention incentive. During the conversation, part-time was included, but it was not included in the formal motion. So I'd like to make that clear.
I would move to clarify that the motion for the one-time retention incentive approved by the Board on 2/15 of '22 includes 1,000 per full-time employee and also applies to part-time employees on a prorata basis.
Second.
We have a motion by Taylor, second by Ung. Any dis-
There's one thing you'll have to add to this, and I think we'll have to do on a separate motion. The Board allocated $250,000 ARPA funds. Does FICA match in there that the county has to pay? We're going to need another $7,920 added to that motion. So we'll probably come back in a couple of weeks and have that on.
Okay.
Small by says we're sending more than 250. The Board did approve the 257.
All right.
Can we do that now, given that it's-
Same item?
Essentially, or is that going to have to be publicly noticed and have to come back?
I think the fact that this motion specifies that the incentive that goes to the employees, $1,000, and then prorata out, that would include whatever additional amounts there are as part of that.
So it's not-
I don't think we would need an additional item.
So we probably need a motion to add that, though, right?
No, I think he's saying that we don't need a motion to add that. I mean-
I don't think we do, because this specifies the amount going to each employee, and then whatever happens on the back end with the additional amounts is included in the motion.
Okay. All right, so we had Taylor and Ung, and any further discussion on it? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Ten B, approval to clarify the motion by the Board on 2/22 of '22. Includes salaried union employees to provide the bargain for percent increase to the employees' biweekly amount for the last pay period of FY '22 for each pay period for FY '23.
Okay, so this agenda item is to clarify that motion as well. There is a salaried union employee within the juvenile detention contract and also then the attorneys within their contract. So we want to make sure that their raise is put on the biweekly amount instead of the annual salary.
So I'd move to clarify that the motion by the Board on 2/22 of '22 included salaried union employees to provide the bargain for percentage increase to the employees' biweekly amount for the last pay period of FY '22 for each pay period of FY '23.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Ung. Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Thank you. Item 11, from Board Administration, pay out the $1,000 retention pay from ARPA fund to be paid out on April 22nd, information item.
This is just up-to-date, information only, April 22nd. Michelle's got this from HR. She's working diligently on this, because we won't be gone Thursday, Friday, but it will be sent out Friday for the paycheck.
All right, anybody else have anything to add on that? All right. Item 12, from Board of Supervisors, Rocky DeWitt. Direct HR Director to work with CWA 7177 leadership to create MOU to provide health insurance for the Sheriff's Office personnel medically discharged. Take her away.
This was one of those, I was going to rely on the backup materials from the original one, where if an officer got killed in the line of duty, that they would, that they would be at 100% disabled, that they would have health insurance for the balance of their, let me say that again, they would have health insurance until they would get employment elsewhere or a eligible spouse would be employed elsewhere, an addendum to back the blue, if you will, that Mr. Taylor brought up in 2018. Again, I was relying on this as just being an addendum. I didn't supply any backup material. Then I got an email from Mr. Woodman that said that since I work for the Sheriff's Office, I probably wouldn't be the right one to bring this up. So I just, going with that. It was nothing more than to direct the director to see if that door could be opened with nothing else involved. I don't think that taking it from an action to an information item was the right call, but whatever.
I guess, informationally, what, so how are we defining medically discharged? Is there like an HR code for this? I don't really know.
Well, to speak before she gets up here, that if they were shot, paralyzed, in a shooting incident, or couldn't fulfill their duties 100%, or if they were in an auto accident and were crippled and couldn't perform the duties that are required by ILEA, Iowa Enforcement Academy, you know, governs their physical duties and so forth. So to further that answer, I guess we'll rely on the HR Director.
I guess it's a curiosity question. Have we ever had anybody medically discharged?
Not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge. Possibly through, like, workers' compensation, something along those lines. And then our company doctor would set the restrictions as to not be able to perform the duties of that job. Or could only perform, you know, a certain percentage from the work injury.
Have we ever had anybody in the entire county medically discharged?
Since I have been here, not for a workers' compensation injury.
So this would be due to, you know, and I know you said in the line of duty. So this would be a workers' compensation issue in which they can no longer perform the duties that they once had.
That's how I see it.
Okay. And you said it's our physician that does the verification of whether or not that's the case and will be-
Yes, we can actually send them to a physician of our choice for Iowa, the state of Iowa.
So, and then this is, to clarify, then Rocky, this is intended to act as like a bridge till they're aged like 65 and get on?
Well, it was, it was a bridge until they could find employment elsewhere or their eligible spouse could get them insurance that they would qualify for.
Is there any double coverage potential with other sources?
The individual themselves, if, you know, 100% disabled, might be eligible for some type of Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid. There's plenty of mechanisms, such as like a worker's compensation payout, MMI, and there's other things, long-term disability, things like that, that could cover some expenses.
When you were looking into the previous topic, did you come across other policies from other counties that did similar?
For-
Expanding it to this?
I've not looked into other counties, expanding to this. Originally, we did check other counties, and there was a few in the state of Iowa that had that provision in their medical insurance. I haven't looked into this, which I can.
And I, a curiosity question, too, if we were to include all county employees, if somebody came into the Board office angry at me and took it out on Dennis Butler, because I didn't include them on that special project, or give them the gift cards in my fake email today? Maybe.
Well, you know, like I mentioned, workers' compensation would, would cover a lot, and people do get final compensation for the loss of whatever abilities they have through their work injury. So.
So what happens right now if somebody, let's just take this worst-case scenario. So if somebody gets rammed by another vehicle, somebody gets shot, and we're not talking at the end of their career, if somebody's 25, and I, I think it's a laudable intent, which is, okay, now you're no longer an employee here, because you can't fulfill the functions, but now you're going to lose your insurance, which is kind of the whole point of, you know, the original thing back in the day when we said, okay, just by the fact that you're no longer an employee doesn't mean your family now loses insurance because you made the sacrifice. And the same sort of spirit, I think, is how this is being offered. So if that's the case, what happens right now? You have a 25-year-old deputy, somebody rams his vehicle-
Or jailer, excuse me.
Or jailer, yep. Or courthouse security, any of those positions.
Well, you know-
What happens to that individual's insurance?
From the very beginning, oh, for the insurance. You know, if they're no longer employed, then they would not be eligible for insurance at this point. They would be offered COBRA, which would be an 18, you know, month situation. If by chance they are eligible to retire, they're in the age of 55, and they can retire through IFRS, then they can be on our insurance till they hit 65, but they'll have to pay those premiums for them or their family. They would like their family to also be on. So it depends on if it's a retiree situation or not.
And that's it? There's no stopgap by virtue of being on the job?
Well, you know, until, okay-
What's the workers' compensation otherwise? Is there anything else or not?
Unfortunately, if something happened, up to the point where it was decided that they can no longer, you know, fulfill the, the job duties, they would be covered, you know, by workers' compensation. They would be getting payments and be on our insurance. Up until that time where they're no longer an employee, then the COBRA would set in. And they would go to our doctor. He would say, you know, you are this much disabled, and a equation is set out through the state of Iowa that they give them a payment for that disability.
Do you know what that is, roughly?
Full disability right now would be a week's wages times like 500. So let's just say that it's $1,000 wage for the week. You would multiply it by 500 weeks, and that would be a $500,000 payment for, you know, complete total disability and not being able to do anything else either. So there's a lot of things that would go into that equation.
But that's for compensation, because that person cannot work and earn a salary.
Exactly.
But that's not necessarily intended to cover that person's insurance, is that correct?
That person can use that money however they would like.
Right, but if it's going to go to its insurance, then it's not really compensation for, you see what I'm saying?
Right.
You're, yeah, you can use it for anything, but you're going to have to cover something that's no longer available to you, because you've, by virtue of your employment, you're no longer have insurance, so.
There's also, like I mentioned, long-term disability. There would be IFRS disability, Social Security disability, a lot of different funding for that person.
Because otherwise, we're looking at potentially at this, today's market rate. Was it about 21, or what's the dollar amount for us to insure somebody?
Right now, we contribute about $20,000 a year for family. But then since we're self-insured, we also pay for their claims.
So what about per individual?
It's $6.90 a month.
Okay. When we have somebody on retiree, like, status, go on to it, they, do they pay the premium, the full premium?
They would pay the full premium, yes.
Okay.
Would you anticipate this, them paying the full premium on that, or?
No, I was anticipating the county would pick it up until they were, found insurance elsewhere.
Just wanted to bring up a point of order real quick. It wasn't clear, from what Rocky said at the beginning, whether he was abstaining from the issue or not. Ultimately, it is up to the elected official to determine whether they're going to declare a conflict of interest. We have advised that, or I have advised that, I believe that this is an issue that would be a conflict of interest for Rocky. If it is something he's going to declare a conflict on, the case law would be that not only should the individual abstain from the voting, but also any discussion or deliberation on the matter, or other behind-the-scenes work on the issue. So if Rocky's going to abstain, then I don't think it's appropriate for him to participate in the discussion.
Was I asked to abstain or advised to abstain on the 2018 piece?
2018?
The one that initiated this, that if there was a death in the line of duty?
I don't know if-
And I'm not trying to be argumentative here, but I don't recall being advised against voting or participating in that one, and I would have been equally as involved back then, because I was wearing the uniform in 18 as well.
I think it would have been similar analysis. I don't believe that the issue was, was raised.
Was it raised because this time, that time Jeremy put it on the agenda, this time it was Rocky?
Well, and, and that's, that was the reason for my email. On Jeremy's agenda item, Jeremy put it forward. I didn't know until the vote itself occurred, what you were planning to do on that, as far as abstaining or not. But I think the analysis is, in our, the guidance from our office has been that if it's a policy that applies equally to all county employees or all supervisors, then there's not the conflict of interest pitfalls. But if it's something specific to, has, has an effect on you as a Sheriff's Office employee, that another supervisor wouldn't, wouldn't have that direct effect, then that's when you need to start thinking about the conflict of interest. And this specifically, at least in the agenda, agenda item, references the CWA bargaining unit that the purr Board has said the courthouse employees are a part of. So in line with the prior guidance that we've given, I do believe that it's a conflict of interest. But again, it's, that's a call for you to make, and you're ultimately accountable to the voters and the other supervisors on that. So we put the information out there.
And the information, I will take under advisement, but as this is an info item, would you still advise me to stay away from it?
I would.
What if we ask him a question?
I think that it would, the other elected officials could, could help Mr. DeWitt navigate the conflict of interest issues by-
By not asking questions? Good answer.
Well, I just say this, I know it's informational for today. I think it's a laudable goal. I, I do think, I mean, by virtue of somebody taking an action and that action leads to the loss of an insurance by which, unless that person was performing in line of duty, otherwise would not have happened, seems to me that we can work out some of the details. I do think there's some details we should explore, like who does pay the premium? Who determines that it's a direct result? And it's an easy one where somebody is no longer able to walk. It's harder when, does this apply to a motor grader who now has these back issues because? But I do think it's a laudable goal, so I'm willing to explore it more and see if we can potentially bring it back.
Would you be available to discuss tomorrow?
Sure.
All right, I'll see if I got time. I'll come up to your office and-
Okay.
All right. See if we can work out to fill those gaps. Any other questions, any other board member? Anybody in the, all right. We're going to move on. Item 13, from Secondary Roads, imitation mark. 13 As, accept the motor grader quotes and return them to the county engineer for an award recommendation.
Colin Ryan here for Secondary Roads. First up, we got these motor grader quotes. These are to replace some machines in our Mobile and Hornet districts, I believe. Get down on two, straight values, I believe, in the book. First up here, we have Murphy Tractor.
Usually John Deere, right?
Yes. And with all of these, Mark has requested that we don't, even if there is a pretty significant numerical difference, he asked that I return each of them.
He wants to actually return the numbers, yeah.
So you can really look them over. So for the first unit, see what says where it's replacing.
This is replacing the, what?
Cat one forty M?
The twenty-ten, you got a two thousand nine cat one forty.
Yes, that would be the one. It looks like the cost quote is three hundred and ninety-two thousand with a trade-in allowance of sixty-seven thousand five hundred, bringing the total net to three hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. For the second one, replacing the two thousand nine cat one forty. This one is priced at three hundred eighty thousand dollars with a trade allowance of sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars, bringing the total net to three hundred eighteen thousand five hundred dollars.
And that new machine which model, John Deere, was that?
For that second one?
Either, yeah, because there's.
All right, so the first one is a John Deere seven seven two G.
The second one was the?
Also.
Same thing?
Yep, same thing.
Why was there a ten thousand difference in those?
Would have to ask them. They don't have their bids itemized out on a per-feature basis, it just has a quantity one for the John Deere.
Gotcha.
Next up, we have Ziegler Cat.
I say we also got these, these are threatening.
So for the Hornet District five machine, their price for the machine itself without trade-in is three hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-seven cents with a trade-in value of fifty-seven thousand six hundred dollars. And bringing us to a net of three hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-seven cents. For the District two machine, number two fourteen, their without-trade value is four hundred nine thousand, nine hundred eight dollars and forty cents. Their trade-in value is sixty thousand, five hundred dollars, bringing the net to three hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eight dollars and forty cents.
And those were a cat, what model?
Looks like a one fifty or one forty all-wheel drive was the options given, let's see.
That's still one in bid.
What was that song?
Looks like it was for the one forty.
Okay, cat one forty?
Mm-hmm.
You almost had Lieutenant Hendrickson get up and dance right behind you.
Are those all the bids to receive there?
Yep, those were the two for the motor graders.
All right, I'll move to receive the, it says accept motor grader quotes, I guess, but that means receive the bid, right?
Second.
So motion by Radig, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four zero, moving on to item B, accept the single accident truck quotes and return them to the county engineer for an award recommendation.
So an OBB daunted by the packet, looks like we only had two quotes received. There's quite a few listed on there. I know I was mentally prepared to be opening a significant note. It's like first up, we have Cornhusker International Trucks.
Is there a Hawkeye on there somewhere?
Looks like some trade-in, truck four oh five. This will be going to the Odo Maintenance District. Purchase price for truck and the equipment, two hundred ten thousand, five hundred twenty, five hundred twenty dollars. A trade value of five thousand dollars for a net purchase price of two hundred five, two hundred five thousand, five hundred twenty dollars. Then for the Hornet District, truck five oh five, looks like a purchase price of two hundred six thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars. Trade value again, five thousand dollars, bringing the purchase price to two hundred one thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars.
What were those models on the truck, name of the model?
Twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four HV six oh seven. Yeah. Cummins powered. Now we have one from Bouyard Trucks from Sioux Falls. Can't really commend them on their taping job. Here we go. For truck four oh five, the Odo District, purchase price, one hundred ninety thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars with a trade value of twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars for a net purchase price of one hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars.
What was the model on that one then, too?
It looks like there's potentially an, looks like they're quoting a twenty twenty-three model with a note here with a potential upgrade to a twenty twenty-four model for an additional four thousand dollars purchase price.
Was it this HV six oh seven as well?
There's this itemized, so I get to see everything. Western Star forty-seven X. For truck five oh five, purchase price of one hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and four dollars with a trade value of twenty thousand dollars for a net purchase price of one hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and four dollars.
Is that also a Western Star then?
Yes. Moving to receive?
Yeah, I'll move, yeah, okay, I'll second that, motion by Taylor, second by Radig. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero. Boy, it sure seems interesting looking up those trucks and the model numbers, they all have like different engine options and.
Yeah, it's very understandable why Mark wants to give it a full run-through instead of just going for the lowest option, there's.
Just that HV six oh seven had three different engine options, so. All right. Moving on to item C, receive the tandem truck quotes and return them to the county engineer for an award recommendation.
So there was a bit of a mix-up on the agenda scheduling there, it's actually a quote for a wheel loader, not a tandem axle truck. It's going to go to the Mobile District, replacing a pretty aging loader that we currently have there. First, first bid we have here is from Murphy Tractor. This is for a John Deere six forty-four P wheel loader. Purchase price is three hundred seven thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. Their trade-in estimate is thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, bringing the net balance due to two hundred seventy thousand, fifty dollars.
Do they have an outright purchase price there as well?
There could potentially be a note somewhere here, but on their quote summary page, there's nothing mentioned about outright purchase, simply their price and a trade-in summary. Next up, we have Ziegler Cat. This one is for...
Probably a cat model.
Would be a cat model. Nine fifty M wheel loader. They have a without-trade and with-trade option, but the purchase price for each of them is the same, three hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. The trade value they have noted is twenty thousand dollars, bringing the net price to three hundred one thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. And last up, we have Titan Machinery. It looks like it is for a nine twenty-one G case wheel loader. There, they again have a price noted outright and with-trade, but it's the same for each of them. The purchase price for the machinery is three hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. Their trade price they offer is sixty thousand, bringing the net price down to two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And those are our wheel loader quotes.
I'll move to receive those.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by DeWitt, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero. Moving on to item D, is approve the contract for corrugated metal pipe supply with metal culverts, Inc. For a one hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars for calendar year of twenty twenty-two.
The board received quotes for corrugated metal pipe culverts on March twenty-second and the contract for the supply of culverts has been returned by the low bidder for signature.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
There you are, Colin.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item fourteen from County Treasurer A, is approval of Mail Services LLC Master Service Agreement. Got a bunch of things for you to sign in this backup materials packet here.
Do I?
Yeah?
Yeah, I do. Tina Vertrand, Wilbury County Treasurer. The first item here for the mail services is for the mailing of the renewal notices that go out to all the county residents. It's something that actually is handled through the state, the state actually issues them. The state actually issues them. The contract has not been put out to bid since 2011, so the last time we had a contract come through was 2011. Rates have gone up over, throughout the course of the years, rates have gone up. This contract isn't... It was bid this last December, January. The same provider was awarded the contract through the state, but they do require all counties to actually, if they want to participate in utilizing that vendor to sign the contract that they've provided for us. Rates have gone up about eleven percent from last year. It was something that we expected, so it is all part of the budget. So there should be no changes from that perspective.
I move it. Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. And item B is approval of FNBO Participation Agreement for County Treasurer, County Sheriff, County Jail, County Economic Development, and Suland District Health Department.
Okay, so this item is for the service provider that does all the credit card payments, ATM, things like that. Heartland was the service provider. We do procure those services through the ISAC group of treasurers. That's what we've done in the past. All these departments have, have machines, basically credit card machines. So they have discontinued the contract with Heartland effective July first and are basically getting ready to roll out the new machines. It's a new service provider. They'll have a few different additional payment options. Their fees have actually gone down. So that's something that, you know, the customers all pay the extra fees when they're paying with a credit card. So again, if we want to participate in this and utilize this service provider, we would need to sign a participation agreement. When we had Heartland, Heartland did not actually require it for us to actually, for each county to sign a participation agreement. This vendor is, the feedback that we're getting back from ISAC is that it's due to some of the multi-factor authentications and some of the additional security measures that have come out in the last couple of years. So I do have forms set up for each department because each department would need to sign the forms. The only other item to note is that the machines do cost two hundred and fifty dollars apiece. The machines that are provided to the treasurer department themselves are covered through the ISAC group. However, every other department would be responsible for paying the additional costs. I've spoken to all the other department heads. They're all aware of what those costs are.
And they're good with that?
They seem to be good with that. I haven't had any pushback or feedback from them. We were having some troubles with Heartland with just being able to have connectivity. Their multi-factor authenticator doesn't work well for people who have to, for staff members who have to move from one station to another and being able to sign in. So these are some of the things that they were actually trying to resolve.
Tina, we weren't anticipating this necessarily in terms of the additional machines. The budgeted, the budgets that were requested, did they recognize that this would be a thing?
We did not have that information at that time. The decision to actually move forward and replace them did not actually come out until the March meeting.
Okay. So are, do you know if we're talking like twenty of them or...
Total's twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Total, total requirements, which they didn't have a budget in, we could pay it all gaming. We have plenty of funds there.
Okay.
It's one-time expenditure.
It's a one-time expenditure, yeah.
Again, couldn't you add like a dollar fee for the first year to cover it? For a transaction?
Those fees would go back to the provider. They collect those fees, but...
Keith would like you to have a bucket.
Yeah.
I think we can take it out of gaming.
I could ask them if they would increase the fee and just put it on a tab for us.
Yeah. Tell it's paid for. I think it's a worthwhile question to ask, because then it's paid for.
I can ask the question. I don't know.
And if it's a failure of a service and we don't make it to twenty-five hundred transactions, then we saved by not ever having to buy the machines in the first place.
Who's paying that fee?
The people that swipe their cards. Dollar at a time. I don't know. I mean, if you want to pay your taxes on your credit card or your debit card, that's part of the cost.
Chargers Department, we have eleven of them and our...
You said the fees were going down anyway, right?
Our costs, the cost part of the Treasurers Department fees are covered.
Right.
It's the additional departments that actually participate through our program.
But typically, when somebody pays with a card anyway, they're paying a fee already.
They are paying a fee already, and yes...
And that fee is going down.
Those fees are going down, yes.
So why not have the fee be about the same and then they pay for the machines, those who use the service? I think that makes sense.
I'm not sure I can get that passed in our contracts, because it would apply to everybody.
Well, until we get to...
It's a worthwhile question. I can ask, I can ask the question.
I think it's worth asking. If we can save ourselves twenty-five hundred bucks, why not?
How soon do you have to pay for these?
Uh, when they come. And I don't have a scheduled date yet.
Well, it's good through July first, you said on the previous contract, so...
Right. So I would anticipate...
We got a couple of months.
Yeah, I would anticipate by July first.
How many transactions do we go through in a year on these card machines?
I have no idea. You'd have to ask each individual apartment. I mean, we do quite a bit every day.
Okay, so it wouldn't be long to get to twenty-five hundred transactions and it goes away and...
But you're asking for the agreement to be approved tonight by the board, is that right?
And the fees.
All right, I'll move that.
I second.
All right, motion by Radig, second by Taylor. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Please ask.
I do show two motions on this one. One of them is to approve the agreement and the other is to approve the replacement costs.
So I would move that the costs be paid for through gaming pending...
Review if...
Pending a review if the one-dollar-a-swipe Radig proposal doesn't pass muster.
I'll second that. All right. Any other discussion? Oh, that was motion by Taylor, second by Radig. I didn't announce that, sorry. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Thank you, Tina. You got lots of signatures to do over there, Tina. Fifteen A from Board Administration, approval of resolution declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation 1.150-2 to issue debt to reimburse the county for certain original expenditures paid in connection with specified projects.
Okay, this is for four different projects that we've already started that we're gonna reimburse through our capital to CIP loan. And this is the format here we have to follow from the Treasury, IRS. If we're prepaying it, we'll get reimbursed form through our loan. So I'll figure it into the final loan here.
And what are these, Dennis?
Ones for hills, demolition, the architaphyse, engineering fees. Ones election equipment for a hundred and seventy-two thousand. Ones Western Round Texas Area Institute, fifty-nine thousand, two hundred. District Health Windows, fifty-five thousand. Tyler Software, thousand sixty-three. Those are all incorporated in the next section we're gonna be passing for our CIP loan.
Was that fifty-nine thousand for the whip thing? Is that that mudjacking?
Yes.
Okay.
They're already pretty approved, but this is just the regulation IRS requires.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by Radig. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Item B, approval of resolution amending the resolution to authorize the issuance of two million, four hundred and sixteen thousand general obligation capital loan notes, Series two thousand, two-two A, and levying a tax for the payment thereof, passed and approved on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two by substituting a new resolution there, therefore approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance of two million, four hundred and sixteen thousand general obligation capital loan notes, Series twenty-twenty-two A, and levying a tax to pay said notes, approval of the tax exemption certificate.
Okay, the reason we're amending the motion back on March twenty-ninth is that's a pre-tax levy, which we're required by law to do to levy a tax in our budget. It's pre-tax on estimated rate. The rate funding came in, it came at two point one-six. We'd estimate one point six-five. Treasurer did bid this out, and we had several banks respond, and this was low bid by Security Bank. The extra interest we do have covered through reserves and the debt service fund.
Oh, I think I see some birthday celebrators.
Rates are going up.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by Taylor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Moving on to item sixteen from Supervisors Jeremy Taylor, authorized chairman to sign and support a letter for Suland Mental Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a request from Kathy Roberts, Suland Mental Health. In order to have a support letter, I'm putting it on from our chairman. I did ask the question, does this obligate the county in terms of any expenditures or financial obligation? The answer is no. It's a really leveraged support for services to be paid for by this grant. I also verified that with the region CEO, Don Menser, and she concurred as well. And so with that, pending any discussion, I would move to authorize the chairman to sign a support letter for Suland Mental Health.
I'll second that. All right, I have a motion by Taylor, second by Radig. Any other discussion on this? All right, I guess. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Moving on to item seventeen, approve office location space for senior and traveling judge offices.
Judge Patrick Todd back up. Since I was here last, I did have an opportunity to look at a couple of different office spaces that have been proposed. Both are on this floor. One is in the back corner here, and the other is, I think the county attorney currently has. It's marked as B seven. I understand this board still has concerns about the sixth floor and wanting to leave that space open in case you'd like to refill that position for the gentleman serving there. At this point in time, I guess my position would be to ask the board to perhaps defer any decisions on where to give us additional office space. The corner office here in the back, while large enough, is suboptimal at best because of the condition of the office. I have concerns about security, being located in the basement in the corner, away from everyone else. Also have some concerns about the need for wiring and whatnot for computer systems and so forth. This other office over here, B seven, which the county attorney currently has, is much more suitable, but I understand and appreciate the county attorney's position that he still feels a need for that space for himself. Of course, that may change over the course of the next year as the county attorney moves to the new law enforcement center. But I wouldn't expect the county attorney to give that space up necessarily until, unless, you know, they complete their move. With those being the only apparent spots that are available at the moment, Judge Polson has indicated before is not retiring until July. His replacement most likely will not be ready to start until sometime mid to late, late August. So we still have three or four months before that takes place. And so instead of rushing into a space that we might have available today, I prefer to wait and see how various office spaces develop over the course of the next three or four months before any final decision.
Can I bring, I just had a thought. One other space that I don't know if we've talked about previously, and I know it's not really co-located with everyone else, so that may not be, do you use the office spaces? So three, four, or five years ago, I forget when, we designated a space up above the auditor's office that would, for lack of a better term, be the chairman's office. I don't know how utilized it is. It's a nice office. Do you know?
I'm concerned where that is at.
It's off the conference room where there's, you know, time clock training, I believe. So you go up the stairs and there's a big area and there's a, the office is off to the left. It's certainly secure.
There's been some discussion of once there's a full-time deputy that this has just been between me and the sheriff and that maybe that could be for their full-time. I mean, it just, space is so limited in this building that...
And I think that's the problem right now, is there's so many moving parts with the building, between the county attorney moving. I know John Malloy is apparently looking for additional space, too. So there's more people than just I looking for space, and so I appreciate that. And again, with the delay here, it may be wiser to wait and see how things develop over the summer. The need is going to be there, that's for certain. It's just not, as I indicated before, I don't need it tomorrow. I do probably in August or September.
Is there a need for somebody to just be able to sit right now and have a good, clean space, or is that not?
As we're sitting here right at this moment, we're good. Because Judge Polson is in his office, and Judge Polson will be able to remain in his office until his replacement is ready to start, which again, probably won't be until sometime in August. So even though he retires in July, he's not gonna be forced out of his current space for probably thirty or forty-five days after his last full-time duty. So again, thank you.
We were looking at two spaces, though, weren't we?
Ideally, we'd be talking about two spaces, one for Judge Polson as a senior judge and one for a traveling judge.
Okay.
We've made do for a long time for the traveling judge for now. It's not ideal, but we can make do for a few more months with that as well. And the other wild card we don't know either is who is going to replace Judge Polson. If it's a Sioux City person, obviously we're gonna probably need space here.
Oh, can he take his old office then, right?
Right, he would take Judge Polson's old office, but again, Judge Polson would move the traveling judge. But the new judge could come anywhere from the third district, or three B anyway. So it could be anywhere from Sioux County to Crawford County. The applicants can apply from any of those counties. So if someone's appointed that lives in Sioux, the need for an office space here in Woodbury won't be nearly as large as if it's a Sioux City person who's appointed. So again, that may be another factor we need to consider as far as the urgency of the space as well, which I hadn't really considered before. I assumed that Judge Polson will be replaced by a Sioux City person, but there's no guarantee of that. And we won't know that until probably the middle of July, who's actually appointed. So there's the possibility that my need might not be as great as I believe it is, will be today, which again, would be another reason perhaps to defer this for a couple of months.
Mr. Chair? Yep. I might be willing to be talked into moving your offices, or these offices you're asking for, to sixth floor if you give Building Services full permission to paint black and gold in your current office. And you can't touch it.
That would be cruel and unusual. And be unhealthy working. Otherwise, I'd be glad to agree.
All right, second that. All right.
Scarlet and cream would be much better.
Well, thank you for working with us as we try and do the best thing.
Thank you.
Well, I'll move to defer.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by DeWitt. Any further discussion?
Could I just ask, PJ, do you want to address the space over there? I thought that you had indicated it was...
I'm glad you allowed me to talk. I was sitting here just for this discussion.
All right.
But PJ Jane's county attorney's office. I did discuss with Matthew, as well as several other people. God, I've had so many conversations about office space lately, but... If we needed to give it up, we can. We prefer not to now, and I appreciate the judge delaying that. We had that space primarily for a grant attorney for the domestic abuse in that area. We were not approved for the new grants, although we are seeking other alternatives. It doesn't look like we're gonna get anything this year. So if we needed to exit that office, we could do it. I mean, we could accommodate it. I actually think this, I know there was discussion about the office up in Pat's office. I don't think that would be suitable for, you know, especially for Judge Polson. Well, for the stairs primarily. With his condition, I don't know how he is health-wise, but those stairs are pretty steep.
They are.
Going up to that office. So this would be more conducive to that. We can actually house two people in that office if we needed to as well. Very efficient. It's all computer-wired, so there won't be any extras there. They'd have to furnish it, of course. But we could accommodate it. So with that, and I think that's what I told Matthew as well, that if we needed to give it up, depending on when that happens, I wouldn't fight it, for lack of any other argument, so.
Okay, all right. Do we have a vote on it? No, no, I had further discussion, so I guess anyone else to be heard on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Moving on to reports on committee meetings. Matthew.
I had Sioux and District Health, every monthly meeting, there's a communicable diseases update. They just noticed broadly that at the onset of the pandemic, the STD numbers reported plummeted, and now they're skyrocketing. and now they're skyrocketing. And so obviously, that's due to the non-reporting of that, but that's just something that health is dealing with, health department's dealing with in the community. Also had a WCICC meeting, monthly meeting. Of note there, other than they're doing a great job, is the, for the communications center director with Glenn Sededy retiring, there's a group set out in code that interviews the applicants and makes the determination. That's headed up by Rex Mueller, the chief of police with Sioux City. He presented us with their pick of Wendy Hess and discussed, you know, the timeline and the salary there. So that was approved and we'll be moving forward on that. So positive about that. That position will need to be backfilled, of course, but that's an update there. Also, I guess as a committee, I had indicated I didn't plan to go to the GFOA Annual Conference, Government Finance Officer Association, but I checked with Dennis and there's plenty of money in the travel budget. And additionally, I, that's June fifth through eighth in Austin, Texas. And I checked with the association. They offer a first-time scholarship fee if you submit an application. So I have that verification here that it would cost the county zero dollars for me to go and be registered, so I plan on doing that.
And what was that for again there?
The GFOA.
GFOA, okay.
That's all I got.
That's all you got, okay, anybody? All right, I did have Simco, two meetings exact, and then MPO. And we celebrated Bill Cole's retirement as the finance director over there. He had been there for quite the turnaround of Simco. He has a replacement, her name is Jasmine, nice gal. We discussed the building project and just kind of the timeline side of it, not necessarily the financing side of it, but it is moving right on track. They expect certain components to be in on certain dates and have the building encapsulated before winter so they can complete it and have it done possibly by the end of the year. Go ahead.
We have a conference call tomorrow with all the members associated with that loan process, and we'll have that ten tomorrow.
Sounds good, thank you. Citizen concern round two. I see some concerned citizens out here. Look like they're here for a birthday. All right, board concerns.
Chair.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I have a question on the retention payment. Is there a phrase or something that you would like included when you send email electronic devices to individuals? So we could have a couple of sentences and think about it and shoot you an email.
We love you.
X O, X O.
May not be believed after today, so.
Don't spend it all in one place.
Yeah, what do you got?
I have one more thing. We're going to have landfill meeting May fifteenth. It's going to be kind of important meeting because the old contracting is canceled or terminated or contracted into the calendar year, which presents a problem. I'm sure rates are going up, but it's right in the middle of our fiscal year, which we do now have to raise our funds, budget for additional costs. This will affect all the cities and the counties all in the landfill contracts. So we'll know more on the fifteenth of May and probably gotta renegotiate the contract, I'm sure. It's going to go up.
Sounds like not fun.
I received a call from Building Services Director Kenny Schmitz. He was looking into options for all the paperwork in the basement of the LEC. He said that he had submitted some of the designs of the Trosper Hoye building to an engineering firm and conferred with them and believes that the third floor has sufficient structure to support those files, so that's probably our best option to look into right now.
Now, is it our job to, is it our funds that have to pay to move that?
No. I understand it is not.
Okay.
Our duty to move it. It is their records, they're responsible for it.
As I say, because there's no way you're going to move all that and put it right back in the right order. So I was curious about that.
That's their job, I believe, to make sure that it's organized the way they want it and moved to their specs.
Excellent news. That's a good concern. Anybody else?
It's a board encouragement.
Do you want to reiterate, there was an email following it up? And if anyone has received an email from me today, it was not from me, it was a phishing scam, so hopefully you didn't fall for it. The major red flags are me asking for help or me offering free gifts, so. Yeah. Well, seeing nothing else?
I was halfway on my special assignment when I was told that it was not you, and I was just.
Well, Jeremy said he assumed the special assignment was to pick up more chips, so there's more up in the boardroom there. Seeing nothing else? Are we going to sing happy birthday for him here? No, you don't want to? Oh, okay. All right, we're adjourned, thank you.
I don't think he's, he's a bra.
Hey, you the bra.
You the bra.